And Paul, we have a. Good evening. It's seven oh two, we're gonna call the. Regular um meeting of the. Branch tree planning commission. To order, my name is Nathan Cleveland and the Chair of the Planning Commission. To my right. Our other planning commission members. Paul Kendall. Jackson Evans. And Malcolm Fitzpatrick is here as well. We also have our consultant who is working with on the zoning by law update. From Two Rivers Autocheech Regional Commission Kyle Katz. Uh he's over here on the left. When our other. Planning Commission member Malcolm is coming in. We have a sign in sheet if you have not already done so please sign in. Um this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Branch Tree Planning Commission. And so we have a few other items to get to before we get into. The warned uh public hearing on the draft zoning by laws that we've been working on. Um thank you all for joining us tonight. We will. Be looking to um. Take comments through the public hearing process. Once we get into that, I will um outline kind of the. The process we would like to follow as far as taking um comments from the public as well as individuals from the planning commission. Um that has some logistical comments that they would like to make. Um as part of the public hearing. But. The first order of business tonight is to approve the minutes from our August twenty first um planning commission meeting, so.
Nathan, just a question. We at some point, we should be approving the agenda. And I don't know whether that comes before or after the minutes, but I'll.
So are there any changes to the agenda that the planning commission would like to make at this point?
Move move its acceptance.
Okay.
Did you take a public comment on that or?
Sure. Why not?
I just typically. In this cases, there's two public hearings. If you warn the public hearing. For the zoning change, then you would close that, then you would go to your like our agenda.
Yeah, so first of all, we have our regular planning commission meeting and as part of that. Um the public hearing is part of. The regular agenda item and that's number three on our list of.
Yeah, I understand.
And so we'll open that.
Would still wanna open. Public hearing forum and then close it.
Yeah.
It's not an agenda item because it disappears that this is worth advertising as a as an agenda item on your planning commission.
Yeah.
With two different hearings. It's two different. There's two that go to the planning commission, you had your first one. Then you won your second one and then there's one that goes to the third, that's where the public gets. So it looks like it's gonna be moved.
Only one public hearing required for the planning mission. And then.
We also had to land up like two rivers.
But like we had a public. January, but. By statute, the planning commission is required to have one. We can choose to have a second one after tonight if we don't vote the playing visit draft zoning by laws forward. Pass on to the select board. So we could have a second one if. Yes.
All right, and that's. We're moving it on, we don't.
It's a potential for us to move on tonight and that is ultimately the goal, Paul, is for us to. Take under consideration the comments that we received tonight.
Right, that's still what I wanna have two public hearings so the public gets their two chances. And then you guys.
The select board will have their public hearing as well. That would be the second required public hearing that we have, but.
We'll go to them and see if they.
Correct.
Make any changes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so whatever we. Forward on to them, they have the opportunity to make changes between their before caring.
That's our last opportunity then. The only opportunity.
Yeah, so. Original plan or the. Regional Commission um and yes, once this like for old city hearing following the hearing. If substantial changes are made, then. Um I do think that towns with a larger population are required to hold more hearings.
I think it's like state statute actually.
It could either in Randall, you're required to have two planning commission hearings on on. I can't recall in statute right now, but um. Sounds sort of uh. Were considered rural towns, they're required to have one planning commission hearing.
This just sort of makes leads me to believe that this is just moving on tonight, I felt a lot more comments from people.
I think the intent um just to follow up on your comments, Paul, is for us to take in consideration all public comments.
Okay.
And then if the planning commission chooses to, they can vote. The draft as it's proposed right now. Select board, but uh there is no definite yes or no, we are. Moving this forward, um it's all based on what we hear tonight and with the. Um the majority of the planning commission. So yes, you will definitely take into consideration.
I appreciate it, it was just a question of my own process.
Definitely. No, it's good to clarify that before we jump into it because we have the uh.
Because you usually have to averageize the public for. Hearing. Different than the agenda.
We did.
Okay, but I haven't seen many.
There's a paper on the twenty eighth, it's been posted.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, on the website.
Okay, yeah, I haven't seen that, I don't get out very much anymore, so.
Yeah. If there's questions, we're we're happy to um provide that documentation to show that. When it was published as far as the public notice and where it was published and at the times. Um and as far uh also. As being a neighbor of ours, the town of Randolph would receive a copy of that notice as well and we have documentation of us sending it out to our neighboring communities. Per statute.
And I assume to represent each regional plan, this meets the regional plan too, so. You folks are gonna have to. Adopt it too.
We don't know, this is just local zoning.
Yeah, but eventually you're going to.
No, that's not how, I mean, this is not the town plan, this is the zoning bylaws, so. Like the town plan has to conform with the regional town plan. The zoning bylaws have to conform with state statutes and that was the goal of it. And and it has to be in line with the town plan, yes, so the town plan helped guide us in the discussion, but we'll jump into that in the public hearing, so if we can. Uh if there are other public comments, we'd be happy to hear those now and then we can dive into some of those details during the public hearing of the draft zoning bylaws.
Did we move to approve the agenda as?
We had.
I moved it.
A a motion, but I need a second.
Second.
Uh motion and second. Is there any additional discussion to approve the agenda as proposed? Hearing none, all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes. Uh next on our agenda tonight is to approve the minutes from August twenty first twenty twenty five um regular planning commission meeting.
I I move their acceptance as distributed.
Do I have a second on the motion?
I I do.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion passes. I will now open. The public hearing on the branch tree draft zoning bylaws. And just open with a a couple of housekeeping items here, uh we would like to be able to take comments from the public. And allow everybody an opportunity to speak, so. Uh we have. An hour that we've scheduled for this, but we don't need to limit ourselves to an hour discussion, um if we get to a point. Where there is needed um. Clarification from the planning commission will provide that, but this is an opportunity for us to hear public comments and take those under advisement. So we're not going to be responding directly to these comments, we will take them under advisement. And I would like to give everybody the opportunity to speak one uh one at a time, so please don't over speak other people. And for the planning commission, please allow everybody the opportunity to finish what they're saying before um we move on to the next individual. It'd be really great if everybody could just um. Raise their hand if they have a comment to make, so I can recognize them and allow them the opportunity to speak. Um at the end of receiving comments, I will allow the planning commission um. The opportunity to um discuss. The comments that we've received as they pertain to the draft plan that we're under um consideration tonight. As I mentioned earlier, it's the intent of the planning commission to be able to vote. On the draft zoning by law and pass it along by statute to the select boards for their consideration with adoption. There is an opportunity for changes to be made between now and the select boards um consideration of of the zoning bylaws. So this is by no means the final ultimate draft that will be voted on by the select board. Um I would like Kyle Katz, who's been our advisor and consultant throughout the process from the Two Rivers Autocheech Regional Commission. To just help um lay the land of. How we got here as far as the adoption process and what needs to follow and how the planning commission will um proceed. At the end of the public hearing. Tonight, so like you have a good kind of. Uh line of cooperation here.
Yeah. Um so if I recall, the planning commission uh and and Two Rivers, we've we've been assisting on this. Uh began uh working on the draft by law in winter of twenty twenty four. Um so it's about a year and a half process so far, perhaps a little more. Um the planning commission has spent a ton of time and effort and uh this is a. Full revamp, if you will, um. With a mindset to really.
It it was the fall of twenty twenty three.
Sorry, uh twenty twenty three um. And to really simplify the bylaws and make them um. More user friendly. Um a lot of the work, not not all of it, but a lot of the work is centered around around housing and facilitating um. The permitting process for new housing. Be so essentially with um with the process. You know, we've the planning commission has gone through the entire bylaw, um they've. Made changes um throughout. Um a public forum was held back in January. And this is the first public hearing. Um when the planning missions are required to hold one. Um but there's no limit to how many public hearings can be held. Um following this point, the planning commission can make any and all changes um. Based on comments at this hearing or general corrections, uh technical things that come up. Um at which point, when. They're ready to send the draft onto the select board, they'll have a a transmittal draft that will go to the select board. Um and at that point, the select board has. Well. Following, if this is the last hearing, there's a one year period at which the draft needs to be adopted. Um by the select board, so there will be a ticking clock and a year is a long time, but I've seen it run out, so. Uh you don't wanna wait too long. Um following the select board hearing. The select board can choose to adopt uh at at any point and they probably. Warned him. Um did I cover all, do you want me to go more into detail on the content or let me just? Comment at this point, Nathan.
Yeah, I think a quick overview of some of the big pieces that we tried to tackle um. Process was was one of the things as far as application intake and as far as looking at the future land use. But if um we have a kind of a summary of those changes that Kyle has done and if you can just do some of the bullet points for us. So we could outline those right now. And then we'll move into the actual public comment period of of the public hearing. Thank you.
Right, so as as I mentioned, a lot of the work we're trying to having um and that said, some of the changes are are statutory. So looking at um. Uh bring the accessory going unit language uh up to the state. Uh state standards. Um which, for those of you who may not know, accessory dwelling units are essentially granny flats, they're small. Um about thirty percent of the square footage of the. Residents or. There's also been a provision included for adaptive reuse, so taking. Um old structures that may not be used for their intended purpose now and converting those to to housing. Then there is a housing conversion provision that's included and this. Really just uh simplifies the process for taking. Currently multifamily structures like two unit dwelling or a three unit dwelling, smaller multifamily and allowing for an additional unit added. Without going through site plan review, conditional use approval, things like that. Um then I think the biggest map. Uh change is the addition of the neighborhood residential district, which extends west from South Branch Tree. Um and is really focused on smaller lot sizes and residential development. Um so those are the big housing changes, you mentioned a process oriented changes to simplify the by law for uh the administrator. And for the development review board. Um and then we've also done made some small tweaks to the flood hazard area regulations that are also embedded within. Uh the government by law. Um and then finally looking at incorporating driveway standards, um you know, having maximum slow. Required with. So people aren't doing anything crazy.
Yeah, I think the other thing that we really attempted to do as part of this rewrite in the draft that we have in front of us right now. Is to comply with the recently updated town plan that we did and try to meet some of the goals and um. Uh goals and action items that were included in there, uh which included identifying areas for. Um village center designation and identifying places where the town could pursue a specific. Uh state designation to support housing and compact development in areas of traditional um. Um developments here in the town of Branch Tree. But also at the same time conserving. Uh some of the areas that were high priority as far as maintaining the characteristics of our town as well. And we've taken into consideration throughout this process, a number of comments that we've received both in writing and. In uh our regular planning commission meetings. And so that is a result. Uh as a result of all those comments. We have in front of us the draft zoning bylaws, so um. Does planning commission have anything else it would like to add at the beginning of the public hearing before we open it up for public comments?
So. Or the housing too was to address the affordability of living in communities too. Um it wasn't just the use and uh the adaptive reuse, but it's to make it more affordable for somebody to build and. Create housing.
I would bring. In a way.
Right, but zoning doesn't really get to the heart of affordability, zoning can help, so. Yeah, or it can worsen, so you can require, oh, you actually need five acres to build a house on that. Well, that's expensive. But if you reduce that lot size in an area that's already has good road access, it's already has some density. Uh that can allow for more affordability, but zoning directly doesn't create that affordability, you have to kind of. Find ways to to allow for a housing that could be more affordable.
But if you implement things with the new road standards, it's more expensive to build a house.
So um I will just. Try to make a clarification here when we're asking for public comment rather than put forward questions, if you could put forward. Something that we could consider, so you're saying that.
Oh, no, it's just that there were three things to the housing, like the issues are in the state of Vermont. And I agree with it too, but I'm just saying that we should consider affordability, but it's that's just a comment. That's not a question.
Okay.
So. That's where I see it has a resonance at the state of Vermont.
And and uh. Close of the public hearing, what we're going to do is review the public hearing comments that we're receiving and so at that point. The planning commission will try to respond as appropriate if needed. Um so affordability as far as drafting the zoning bylaws is something that we need to um. Have on our list of things to come back to, uh I. And I'll just tell you, Paul, right now that um. That was definitely a consideration. Yeah, and uh we can talk a little bit about some of the things that I think was. Uh considered when we're drafting the bylaws to give you a little bit of background of what we think. Would help with that affordability piece and and make things more predictable and. Just really the quick piece of that is being more predictable about the process of whether or not you have to go to N R B or get administrative permit. You know, trying to clear. Clarify the process of what is permitted versus what's not. And and trying to be much more clear on that, so um definitely, I wanna, I will. I'm just trying to make notes of these public comments and and we'll try to dive into some of those a little bit more as we allow more of the discussion to happen. So um did you have anything else you wanted?
Well, I do have a number of things, but I was wondering if we could start, we had a public meeting back in January. And I've read through the documents and I'm not really sure if I see a lot of the comments reflected in this document. And we'd like to see here what you guys did take up, what you did change in the document. From the January public hearing, because I.
I I I think the appropriate approach, Paul, would be for you to ask.
With the synopsis, what you've listened to.
I mean, this is this is not intended as a as a hearing for us to be defending what we have done. It is, it is to hear public comment, so I think if you wish to make public comment. You can make public comment, but we're not supposed to enter into a dialogue or debate at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and yeah, we can definitely, that's. Literally another thing that we can address as well as how did we consider the the comments they received during the public hearing.
Appropriate then, because if you approve it tonight, then that you guys don't have any obligation to actually tell us that.
This could be moved tonight. And it seems like that's.
I mean, I know I saw the the list of that was that was created from that, but beyond that, I never saw it. Some of those items were never even checked. There was nothing on them or anything in the document I saw, it was just that it was a list of things, action items. And then I never saw a single thing, there was some things maybe in the minutes here and there, but it was nothing like fully addressing like. The comment list or like why your decision to ignore something from the comments of that meeting or not. I'm not saying that's relevant tonight, because obviously this is public comment, but I mean, I guess that would be my question is like, when would that happen then?
I mean, just from a process standpoint, we gathered all those, all the comments from the January forum. You know, we organized them into a spreadsheet that and then connected each of those comments to the appropriate section of the by law that it pertained to. And then at uh, I don't know, meeting, we have to go back in the minutes, we we went through and reviewed, we we made a determination of whether. We had adequate, we thought we'd adequately addressed that comment or whether it needed to be reviewed. From that, we built what we called our parking lot, issues that we needed to review in subsequent meetings and we chidled away at those and. You know, over the last since January, so. In the last nine months, we've been tackling those things on the third Thursday of every month in this room. And in open forum, you know, and we're not, we have not catalogued every single. You know, sentence change that has gone in there, I mean, it's in a track change document in a word, you know, a word thing, but. We've we've taken those comments in 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 both the ones we received at the forum and in writing subsequent to that. And taking each of those into consideration through, you know. Through our the public meetings. It so whether we adopted and. And made those changes that, you know. We we certainly didn't just accept every single change that people suggested, we took them into consideration, decided as a as a board, whether. We felt we had addressed that adequately or whether to be changed or adopted.
I I do think though that it would be since that that spreadsheet. Was a part of of a a public meeting. And uh it's in the record that that spreadsheet with our comments as to which ones uh were going to be further considered. Or we felt that that spreadsheet can be made available to, so I think it would answer a large part of the questions.
We can match it up with this document and see where our comments ended up, we don't see any line. But that that be what it is. I've written a couple of times here, you know. And it's gonna come up in my comments. On still issues and should we be knocking? Like, do you want me to go first and then each person or do you want each person to go off their list, it sounds like, you don't?
I I. I'm fine with going around the table first and then coming back to you, Paul, and see if there's other comments that might coincide with what you have. Um so um Mike, you you've already mentioned again, you're in line with some of the questions that Paul has raised. Are there any other things that you wanted to bring up right now?
I don't know if mine's gonna be a hundred percent directly correlated to this.
What we're looking for though, so.
So I mean, I I'm happy to discuss what I came here to discuss and it it really is related to uh rural one and scenic rural. And um. I'm had created a document for you guys that goes through the thirty towns that are per part of Two Rivers and I've read virtually all of their bylaws. Um and I tried to see where we fit in line with their acreage requirements. Uh for those thirty towns, many of those towns have no bylaws. Um and Branch Tree, there's only two towns in. That planning area that require ten acres, that's Bethel and Braintree. Um. Ten acres for what we would consider rural one, so like basically I went through and I I read out what all the districts were. And tried to match them up with Braintree, okay? And if you go and do that and you look at all the districts, all the towns around us, virtually everybody has smaller values for acreage. That's required to build. Braintree is extremely high. And even if you look at Bethel. Okay, their difference between their ten acre and their next level are completely different. Versus if you look at Branch Tree's bylaws and you look at rural one and you look at scenic, they're virtually the same. It makes no sense and it would be a mistake to keep them the same. Because it doesn't make any sense, if we're trying to create something that scenic and preserve it, why is it almost the same exact requirements as rural one? I just don't understand that. It doesn't make any sense to me, it actually hurts in the long in long term for this, like this, who knows the next time we're gonna. Update these bylaws and I don't believe the approach of. Trying to systematically put housing in one area without making an adjustment to this. Very odd. Districting in Braintree is a good approach, I mean, I'm happy to provide you with the document, but it is so strange that Braintree. Out of these thirty towns is the only one that has these two districts that are virtually identical, okay, but somehow they're different. On paper and it hinders what you can do in Braintree basically. Um and that's 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 my my big thing about this, it's very frustrating to me as a person. That is like just below the threshold of being able to subdivide in Braintree and basically be like, oh, sorry, you don't have enough land. But I go and look around at every other place around us and the reason behind it is because Braintree wants to preserve land. And I brought this up at the last meeting, almost seventy percent of the land in Braintree is in current use, okay, it's already preserved. If you look at the amount of development that's in Braintree, we're talking like less than five percent of the land in Braintree is developed and so. If we're still just trying to push development to this smaller and smaller area, they're still never gonna be able to get more people here to reduce the tax. To to increase the tax base, it just, it doesn't make sense and I think that needs to be clarified. I think that something significant needs to happen there, either you have to get rid of a district or you have to make changes to it. Because it doesn't make sense why we have two districts that are virtually the same, and I think that's basis of my comments.
Think the only difference is setbacks, isn't it?
It's setbacks and you're allowed twenty percent versus ten percent, but everything else is exactly the same. I mean, and no one here is building. To a twenty thousand square foot building on their property, who's building a ten thousand square foot building on their property? I mean, especially when you're virtually not allowed, like, I I will say the brewery is gonna be an anomaly after. This and I think it's gonna be very hard for people to build anything without scrutiny anymore, that's not specifically along the twelve acre. Where we don't really actually have the land for it and it's not either in the flood plain, prime ag. Okay, and then that's assuming that these people that there want to subdivide, that they've always had, we talked about this last time. They've always had the ability to subdivide, these rules have already existed for for a long time and people don't do it because subdivision in general is costly. And so just assuming that we're gonna just all of a sudden subdivide these pieces of properties because they're here without allowing some other form of subdivision in Braintree. Isn't gonna help with the greater picture of the housing problem in Braintree and I think it's being focused understandably partially by the state. But I think that we're focusing on just one specific thing without looking at the greater picture of Braintree.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I piggyback another? Thank you. Is it okay if I piggyback another?
Yeah, let's just see if there's any other comments and then we'll come back to you, Paul.
That's not what we do that.
Yeah, thank you.
It was just a comment. I don't need you to.
Yeah, we'll just, we just wanna allow others to speak real quick and then we can come back to your your comment. Linda.
I'm wearing a couple pants. I want to be in the G L B. And I'm looking forward to see what's in in store for us. Um, as a landowner, uh. I would have to argue maybe not quite as loud or eloquently as these gentlemen. Uh, in favor of having wide open spaces, it's. A few voices where you can get by that. And especially uh being fairly. Close proximity to some of the major. Within a the short drop, you can be out in the middle of nowhere. And having grown up in New York City, I can really relate to that for the other point of view too.
Thank you.
Um, I have uh. Well, um eight of which are uh just uh typographical like. Stylistic things in the draft.
So formatting type?
Formatting type things. So you know, I can send them to you afterwards. Um substantively um on page ten. There is uh a reference under number thirteen to registered mobile homes, campers and travel trailers used for temporary habitation. Not exceeding six consecutive months within a calendar year. So I think the idea is that we want to regulate. Campers that are being used for six months or more. We wanna treat them as as a whole essential. Right? Rather than allowing people to live in a trailer for eight months, nine months or so. And I'm just wondering about your choice of language for six consecutive months. Someone could live in it for five and a half months, go to Maine for two weeks, come back. And start a new six consecutive months. So I think you might wanna think about just changing that consecutive somehow. To uh six months during a a calendar year or or something like that. That has some issues too. I'm not sure what the solution is. But I think the six consecutive months is potentially a problem. My next comment is on page fifty three. These are relative to the general conditional use use standards. For some reason, um you've limited uh scenic resources only to the rural scenic district. Um and so under what is mislabeled six point five E A. I think you should uh delete the words rural scenic district and also delete C sidebar. Which is not, there isn't a sidebar there. So that when the DRB is considering any conditional use. One of the things that they consider are the scenic resources um. So the development is located, shall be located and configured to avoid undue adverse impacts to the scenic character of the area. I don't think that should be limited exclusively to the rural scenic district.
Can I just ask a quick question about the document?
Yeah.
So I printed off the one from the website and it's in blue and red. And I assume the red is what you took out and blue is what you added back in. But my number pages don't match his.
Would you like to? A current copy that we're looking at?
Oh, he's got that copy.
Yeah.
Well, I took. The one on my computer is off of the website.
Yeah.
Section at six point five, they're not.
Right.
And my numbers are not going.
Sometimes with with the rewrite, the way this draft came out.
Yeah.
There is a renumbering, so it's if you. Number that is not the same as. That's what I'm saying, if you if you like it, this also.
And so this document is a hundred eighty four pages. This, the original one was eighty one pages.
And the one I looked at has a hundred and eight.
Okay, so that's where I'm like really.
All right, so uh Paul, what I was just talking about. Uh is section six point five.
I think you got, I think Paul gave me the right.
Yep.
Oh, you've got a hard copy.
Page fifty three.
Yep, page fifty three, now that's a matching up. Okay, next one is page sixty nine. And by the way, I'm here as the as the resident landlord and not as a.
Can you give me the section, Lou?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, the section now is seven point three subdivision waivers. I do not understand why we go through page after page after page of all kinds of subdivision requirements. And then say in section seven point three that the DRB can waive any of those in the informal. Uh in the uh, what's it called? The in the preliminary approval state.
Without justification.
Well, maybe there's justification, maybe there isn't. Certainly not required at a public hearing that the DRB is gonna waive those things. And I just don't think that the that we should set forth a bunch of requirements that our DRB can then. Just determine that they're gonna waive whenever they want to. It's like set them up and they can decide. There is no scenic resource here, right? But they can't waive consideration of it, you know? So I would suggest that there should not be. DRB ability to waive subdivision requirements. And then my last substantive comment.
Can I just clarify that last comment, Lou? Just so I can reiterate that you do not want the DRB to be able to waive subdivision requirements. Is that accurate?
Right.
Okay.
I mean, unless you have some reason that you think.
Well, at the record meeting, you'd be okay with it, but not at the pre-application where that's something before.
That's a good clarification.
Well, I don't think they can waive it. If we set forth that you gotta do these things, they can consider number one and say. It is not relevant because the landlord didn't want us to do this. It's a tiny little lot and we decide this. But they can't waive their the required yet, you know? So it's like set up what they have to consider, consider it. And you know, they can consider it summarily, but I don't think they can just wait. And my last substantive comment is on page eighty two. And it's again, section eight point two relative to waivers and variances. Um, there's something in here in the middle that says applicants for new development that only needs a dimensional change from established. Standards such as a reduction in setback may be able to get a waiver. So I I again, don't think that this that the board should be able to waive setback requirements. I think they can adjust them in under that criteria. I don't think they can waive them. And I think you have to be very careful when you're talking about setback requirements or sorry, dimensional requirements. Yes, that includes setbacks. It also includes lot size. And so I think the the board should not, the DRB should not be able to adjust lot sizes. Um which is a dimensional requirement in the DRV process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, I wanna come back to your comments that you had earlier um.
Alright, so in um Mike's, I I agree with Mike on the difference between our. Rural one and rural scenic, there is no difference other than setback requirements and it sounds like density of the lots. Um, and I think that also shows up also in the village and the new district to the same exact, why create? A new district, why not just extend the village to there? Because they're the same exact setbacks, they're the same, you're just making it. Like you're, it it like by mobile acres there up to Whitebrook Road. That's your new neighborhood. And it's the same exact thing as the village up to where I am, south of town. There's no difference at all. So why have a different district? Call it all village. Is there a newer neighborhood happen? Because right now we're not in a village.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm in a two acre. Great zone, so.
Right.
It it goes, it's under the the same as the rural scenic and the one, the neighborhood. And the village are the same exact thing.
Like in the trust file.
And and they apply each other, so just make one larger.
Yeah, there's some specifics on why we can't do that, but I can dive into the rest in a second. Sandy, do you have any comments?
No, we don't.
Okay, and online we have a couple people. We wanna make sure that they have an opportunity to speak. We have Jessica. Which I believe is Jesse Resard and Grace Carsons, who. Any comments from the folks that are online? And I can't see the comments that are in the text box there.
I just have raised your hand.
Okay, thank you.
Um, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Jesse.
Um, yeah, one comment I had is I'm just. I I don't know, it just makes me a little bit nervous having to have. Pay for a survey of a property when you have absolutely no idea whatsoever. If there's even a chance that your property can be subdivided. Um, from what I understand, surveys these days are no longer two thousand dollars. They're quite substantial in pricing and. So if you're not gonna be able to get anything out of it, it seems like there should be. Maybe some sort of preliminary hearing or or something like that. Um, or be able to have some sort of discussion before having to um. To do uh to do a survey.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback on my comments to that? That's sort of in line with that?
Yeah, please go ahead, Paul.
Or if I come in, I think I'm wanting to. Um, only once we've done a major subdivision in a town of Braintree and I come in and I do my subdivision, I've gotten all my state permits, I filed my map. In three years, if the town determines that I haven't substantially done that, I have to come back and reapply.
Substantially done that means. Commenced work and what is the definition of substantially commenced?
Building houses, that mean putting septics, is that be putting wells in?
Or just cutting down?
I've I've put in ten thousand dollars. Into my property and then you're saying in three years I gotta come back and renew my permit and Mac is already filed here in the land records. I've got my state permit, it's on the state website. Subject designs and everything, but the town of Braintree wants me to come back in and discuss it with them. Because they, I don't know if I substantially started or not, that was a concern of mine, the money out late and then knowing that it could be taken away from me.
Right.
Or be questioned. I mean, for in my case, I have six lots and I'm gonna do one every three, four years and it's my retirement. I I have not planned on doing it in two years. It's gonna be something that's done in ten or twelve years.
Yeah.
Um, and that's my equity in the property and for me to have to keep coming in and justifying that is a hard one.
Understood. Grace, do you have any other um questions or comments that you would like to bring forward? Um Grace is also our zoning administrator as well, so it's important for us to understand her perspective. Both as a citizen and as our ZI. And Grace and and Jesse, if you have questions, feel free to um put them into the chat or just chime up. Real quick, if you have anything.
Who's Eric Webb?
Eric Webb has also joined us.
Right.
So just so thank you, Lou, I didn't notice that. Uh Eric uh. Would like you to have the you speak if you have any questions or comments.
No, I'm only an observer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I I do have one other thing. This is Jesse. Um, so my other thing is. Just to reiterate what I discussed at the last hearing that you had was the half acre lots and. How I think it's ridiculous that we're even entertaining the idea. Of half acre lots when the state makes it so frickin' difficult for you to do anything on your half an acre and. Um, I just, I think it's misleading. I don't. There's plenty of people out there that don't understand how all of this works and. You know, and there's plenty of people out there who would love to take advantage of those people who don't understand how these things work. And come in and sell a bunch of half acre lots and move to some other state and not look back. When you've got, now you have all these ten acre lots and nobody can do anything on them because this. Wonderful state that we live in makes it so friggin' difficult for you to do anything with your half acre.
Thank you.
I would like to reiterate that there's no way you can put a well inside a half acre with isolation distance. It's tough enough on acre. And what you're doing is in some other people's lands and getting their permissions and stuff like that.
So you, it's it's not impossible.
It's not impossible, but it's likely not to happen and then it encumbered the property. With the reasons and right reasons, I find a lot of those are a little wary about sharing wells and septics.
I do think the idea of something not being impossible but improbable is, I don't know why you would make rules around that. Because like we're, the idea of maybe something in the future, like in ten years, maybe we have new septics. So why incorporate it into the bylaws now when it's not probable? Um, it seems.
Is this in reference to the?
It is in reference to the half acre. Um, it it just, it's it seems odd. Why would we be? We, why would we be doing that when it could, again, the idea is to address affordability in some of that fashion. Um, doesn't sound like that would be met with a bunch of other stuff that would have to be required. To make those hatchet lots work, if it's even possible. And it would be on a total case by case basis.
Definitely. Sorry for those that are not here, but there's some wonderful. I really appreciate the the open conversation and and the clear comments and suggest, not just suggestions. But um specific items that you're referencing in the draft plan. I think everybody has done a really awesome job of a. Keeping us informed of the questions like, this is not the only time we've heard some of these questions, right? And and um if we don't have any other comments, I just wanna make sure everybody has.
That's why we need to have another game. Let's just move this to your October meeting, have another.
Thanks, Paul. I also have received some public comments by email today and recently asked today. From people from our planning commission um that. Based on the draft that we have in front of us, they still have some additional comments. And so I would like to um just. First, Malcolm um had some specific things that he wanted to bring to this public hearing as a public citizen as well. And and then uh Paul Kendall also has some suggestions and then we'll come back to you after we go to those two first, please. Okay, Malcolm?
Yeah, I actually looked at bylaw in two different ways. One is at the statute, but. We'll miss that for half certain bylaw. And the statutes are somewhat confusing in part, but if you look at them long enough, you may be able to figure out what they say. But essentially, we are in our enabling state, enabling. And you cannot do anything which is not stated in the bylaw. Other than the statute, you cannot do a bylaw which if it's not enabled in the statute. And the statute does several things uh that says may and therefore you can. Do do what it says may do. But some areas it says may, if you may do this if you incorporate all the pollen. And in other places, it says you may not do, but that's very true. So there's some, there's some gray areas in between, is what I'm saying. And the confusing thing is if it says it may and if. Does that mean you gotta take all of the things that when it says if? And I believe it does, but in our. When I looked at some of the things that say, if you accept this under a may, then. We have not incorporated all of them into the bylaw itself. And I I like a legal opinion on that. I don't know, but if you have to, I suspect you have to. And I I like a legal opinion on that, I don't know, but if you have to, I suspect you have to. Um. And so there are some things that I think that we just have been there that we like to think there. Should be in the enabling and the statute as enabling. And I'm not sure they are. Again, that's a gray area on your interpretation of the statute. And I went through and all of them, but I found a lot of them, we, thanks to Carl, we we. He's he's incorporated in the bylaw. But in doing so, there's more confusion. Other words. We are now, for example, we are now by right entitled to two principal. Drawing units on a lot. And every drawing unit on a lot has a right to have an accessory, external accessory use. So that means we get more, if if guy has enough money, he can build a principal use and another principal use. And four accessory uses. Which I'm not sure is what they intended to do in legislature. But it's fair and I I, there's nothing says you can't put. If you have two principal drawings, you can't put two other accessory use. Um. And then I can go through this and 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 the bylaws themselves. And show where the jury problem, if you have an astute person who wants to develop some lots. He can really get away with the law. The other problem I see is. If I go back to the unit, the laws itself. The most complicated law that we are asking, I'm not asking, I I wasn't for it. To be incorporated in our bylaws. Is the flood. Uh, acts. Acts that says what is a flood hazard zone, what's a corridor area and so on. So anybody who wants to. Do anything near a river or a stream. Has a big jump to get through those loops. And the flood hazard area and the corridor area are not congruent always. In fact, they're not. So how is, how are we gonna let this person build in neither one of those areas? Or one and not the other? The flood hazard areas are, as I understand it. Are built on where floods have been in the past. And then they looked at the contours and where they would be in the future. So there's a realistic basis to the flood hazard areas. The corridor areas came about. I call the green people. Because they want the, they want the stream or river to wander where it wants to water. And they drew these lines. Uh, they looked at the distance of the present river. Distance between the two banks. And on either side they drew a line. Three hundred, uh, three times the width of the river banks. And I think that is just, person does not understand the scientific. How streams work. They do wander. But they wander. Depending on the soil, the rocks, uh, construction and so on. I mean, I went down to uh, Lebanon today, looked down at the White River. And I was amazed to see. The river is fairly dry. But I also imagined if that stream had dried up, there would be a corridor down the middle, a a single. Where the low point of the stream would be continuous. But not, it it's a, it's a winding area, the stream bed. I was trying to think, how would that dynamic of that stream water under. The heavy stream that usually occurs in the White River, how did that get a wandering stream bed? I don't know for sure. But what the corridor act does not recognize. Is that the wandering or serpentine's area of a stream or river. Has, especially during flood, it has, it wipes out all of what's below it. It's just, it's it's just the bossy of that wire. And the volume of that wire with that velocity just takes everything downstream. That's in there, and then it rebuilds itself, it's a dynamic thing. And I agree, we have to get areas that the that the stream wandering, if that's. What a river really wants to do and you can tell because it's in tier more problem soil, the soil washes away. And the biggest culprit of that really is the state itself. Building roads, near streams. Across streams, rivers. And the big example of that is the road to Burlington, you look off onto your right going to Burlington. And there's a little teepee on the right hand side and it's in the middle of of little ponds. Those little ponds were the curves in the river at one time, but the river itself was way over that side before they built the interstate. Yeah.
Excuse me, isn't supposed to be comments on the bylaw? Doesn't sound like that's what.
It's in the bylaw, that's what bothers me.
So what proportion of the bylaw are you asking about, Malcolm?
And also, it's set by the FEMA match and the federal government, it's not set by the town.
Yeah.
We get like one foot and two foot, and that's one of my comics, but. That's about it, you get what the federal government hands down with FEMA and flood corridors and. But what isn't.
No, the state, the state is determining quarters.
The state is, yes.
Yeah.
But what you need flood insurance is insured by FEMA and it's a one foot base level within a certain distance. That's where.
That's that's within.
Malcolm and others, I I do just wanna make sure we come back to point, and if there's a specific.
What I'm saying is.
I I understand.
I think it's a very complicated. To have two different bylaw. Or protection of the river. Based on two different ways to do it. One, I think the flood hazard area is very scientific. The corridor. Is some imagination of someone in the state. If if you look at the the third, third branch. Where the river goes under the bridge, the new bridge, they had to restore it. The corridors are way up into the edges of it. Of that stream above the, above the bridge. Then all of a sudden they narrow down and all of that water from that wide river. Corner above it goes under that bridge. That is physically impossible, I couldn't know anything about flow of water. They can't get under that bridge.
Malcolm?
Yeah.
Can we bring it back to?
Yeah, I'm saying there is no rationale or reason for the corridor, I don't think.
You don't believe we should be adhering, so can I summarize your comment?
But it's in the state law, I don't, I don't think it should be in our law, what the, what the state is doing, I think. Is trying to make the towns enforce the law they made, no matter how bad it is.
So is your comment that you want something taken out of the?
I would take the whole thing up. And let let the town, if it wants to have a different bylaw. About the corridors and and the rivers and the floods.
So you don't agree with the flood corridor?
I do not.
Do you agree with the flood hazard?
Yes.
Relate, okay, thank you.
And and definitely, uh, because. To have anyone even enforce one of these is gonna take a lot of expertise and skill, unless we hire another person. But that's gonna be expensive. To figure out, there, the quarter you can't figure out on the map, you have to look on on where they drew the lines.
Any additional specific items related to the proposed bylaw that you passed?
I have a lot of protections and and I think there's con contradictions in the actual bylaw. And there. It's hard to understand because of the contradictions. And I'll go to, let someone else speak, but what I'm saying is. We have to go back and look at the enabling statute. To see what it says you can or cannot do, and I think we need a legal assistance on that. The biggest problem comes in conditional use and and uh, site plan. To me. The site plan is an area of information. Spatial, usually two dimension on a, on a piece of paper. And conditional use are uses that are gonna be within someplace on that. On that plan. But what you've got to do is attach the conditional uses to development of that space that's shown on the site plan. So, you know, for example, if you have a large building. And you have a neighbor nearby within a couple hundred feet and you have a noise making equipment, you put it on the other side of that building, not. Towards the neighbor. Because it can go through the wall, but it 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 dissipates, it goes outside.
So like if you started your tractor and your neighbor heard it.
What, I'm sorry, go.
If if a neighbor started the tractor on that side of the building, the neighbor should have a say about the threshold level.
And what I'm saying is that neighbor can be. Tolerant of the noise.
Or not.
If the inside generating of that noise is on the far side. I mean, it takes someone with some knowledge of noise. That you can, how you can mitigate. And one of the common things that have not mitigated noise is our trees. But I've been with some developers who planted pine trees on the side to to mitigate. Pine tree go up and the noise goes underneath. It's it's not a, it's not a tree that you can mitigate noise with. And there's, if you look at noise attenuation books, they tell you that, but these about, we we even again need somebody. Or some specifics in our site plans and. Conditional use who knows anything about developing in areas.
So. So, can I summarize this, that you have concerns that the DRB is allowed uniformly to provide that conditional use? You would like some type of. Instrument that requires them to get professional advice?
Allows them to and requires, yes. If they don't understand. Just then, it's.
We're all volunteers.
Because essentially, essentially what we've done under the new bylaw. Under the old bylaw, everything other than one and two family housing. Were by right, you could go in and build if you met the others, set back, that mention of requirements. We now are permitting other types of housing by. Uh, conditional use or site plan or the two together. Go into how areas that were now one or two family lots. So everything now other than one and two family. On these lots are gonna require some sort of conditional use. And that's gonna be a real burden, I think, on the DRB. And when I ask, I I have some expertise.
You're saying that it's gonna be hard for them to make a decision that's. The same every single time so that it's fair, because I I guess I I don't, I don't understand. Yeah, yeah, you're saying it's gonna be a burden on the DRB, is that because it's not clear? How to make the decision and so everybody's decision is gonna be different?
Yes. It's gonna be conditioned on where, what district that's in, what the conditional use actually is. And there's a list of them in in the.
So you would like us to be more specific about the conditional uses in in this scenario?
Either that, we get, we gotta hire someone who understands it.
Or don't put noise in your zoning.
I'm sorry?
Don't put noise in your zoning or scenic resources, because we did finds that. I mean, that's the other option, don't put those.
Okay, we we've gone nearly. Okay, I wanna make sure we allow time for others to speak.
I gotta, I'll go through some.
And you've already provided these comments.
Let me, I'm not all.
And I've shared them with with the planning commission.
But the other thing is, as a planner. I would start this whole process of looking at a soil map. To see where there are good soils in terms of working with your septic system. Those I would set aside for higher density housing. So there, there should be areas that we, around town that we could put higher density housing, mix it with some affordable. And so we can have low cost housing mixed with other housing. They exist in this area, some gravel area. Will take it, but you gotta be aware of where the gravel, when it goes down into gravel area where it grows underground. Whose ever septic system or well. So there, putting, designing areas. Requires a a working map of soils and what soils you can have for septic system. That's where I think we should have started. But I'll, I'll end there for now.
Thank you. Or I go, Paul Kendall as a, another planning commission member, but also a public citizen, um, Paul. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, um. Before I. With my list of four uh, uh, suggested uh, edits. I want to thank Kyle Katz, um. Who, since this has all been brewing in the last week, once we started really looking and reading, rereading. All that we had drafted, uh, certain things began to to pop. And so, um, uh, in the last three days, basically, uh, uh. Kyle has very kindly generously uh, responded quickly to my questions. And 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 concerns, um, so. So much of what we have done in this, um, proposed uh. Redrafting of the of the bylaws. Uh, has been possible because of of Kyle's uh generous uh, uh, uh. You donation of his time over and above of what was really required by the, um. By the grant, in my opinion, uh, and certainly in 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 this last several days, but let me just go on in terms of my own. Um, suggestions here, the 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 planning commission has prepared this proposed update. Of the unified bylaws to bring it into conformance with the recently adopted town plan. Especially in regard to encouraging the development of more housing. And to enable the bylaws efficient administration. The following suggested edits address certain sections of the bylaw. That in my view are either unclear, confusing, incomplete or ambiguous. And that could therefore affect a consistent and timely review process of development permit applications. My first one has to do with section one point seven. Section one point seven grants the development review board certain authority. But it it omits the DRB's authority over site plan approval and subdivision approval. Uh, these authorities should be added, that's a simple edit. Um, second, uh, section three point twelve. Permits accessory dwelling units under certain conditions. The list of conditions included in the proposed bylaw, however, is confusing and omits men- mention. That if an ADU adds a bedroom, a state wastewater permit may be required. I think that should be added and and big tip, and I have copies of what I'm reading that I I can distribute later. Section, uh, my third has to do with uh, a concern about waivers which. Uh, has been raised uh, both by Lou and and Jesse uh, in in different ways. Section seven point three grants to the DRB. A very broad authority to grant waivers during the review of a subdivision application. Its opening sentence says, as part of its approval, the development review board may waive. Or vary, subject to appropriate conditions, the provisions of any and all application or review procedures. Submitted and development requirements. Uh, I've had several back and forth. Uh, uh, communications with Kyle on this to be basically understand what's going on here. Uh, and at the suggestion of Kyle, it seems to me that the best way to respond to the breadth of this waiver authority. Is to narrow the DRB's authority to waive certain subdivision review requirements in section seven point eight. Jesse's comment raises a point about seven point seven, which I think would can be considered in the same, in the same light when we get to that. And my last uh, uh, suggestion is that in section three point, section three point eight is very unclear. It permits up to two build, principal buildings on a single lot. The section then permits an exception to this two building limit. If a lot is able to be subdivided, this section says, more principal buildings may be permitted on a single lot. But the section neither mentions the agency and process for determining that ability to be subdivided. Nor does it say how that ability to be subdivided should be made a part of the lot's permanent land record. This exception is in fact a waiver. Anytime you're going to accept something, it's you're waiving it. And it should therefore state in section three point eight that requesting such an exception will require subdivision review. So, um. Those, the chairman, are my four suggestions and we can come back to them when we're reviewing.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
I'd like to.
Of course, you're like, we want to make sure we're taking into consideration everything that.
Thank you folks for your time. I was on the planning commission for twelve years. We updated something that was thirty years old and it's really hard. And every time you look at it, it looks different and you're like, what were we thinking? So that's why I caution you not to, I was thinking this thing through to take the time. It's a lot, it's going to stay with the town for a little while. I had already heard some relaxities even amongst the planning commission members. That maybe it shouldn't be voted on tonight and sent to the select board, maybe you need a couple more meetings or even maybe one more public meeting. And then we're all on board.
That's. Yeah.
Something that I would like to see happen, whether it happens or not, it's just my opinion.
The other thing that I would like to also just reiterate is we have the ability to make changes. Not just as a a full overblown review of the draft. So if there are specific items, even as a process piece, right? If we vote this onto the select board, there's an opportunity for the select board to make changes. If the select board does not or does make changes, we can still update certain sections. One by one, or we can go through what we tried to do this time and do a comprehensive change of that. So there's a process for us to make amendments as we move forward. This is not a stagnant document. This is a living document that can be updated throughout. The the near future or the long future of the town of Rantry. So it.
It it is harder to do than that. Two or three more meetings, you would have a solid document with transparency. And people's opinion where where community members. And who who do have a passion for the area and want to see things better. Um, so that's the rest of my comments. Um, you had mentioned about the campers thing in the six month I used to own Able Mountain campground. Um, I would like to see the campers need to be registered as a registered vehicle on top of that. I think that would make it a little bit clearer.
Is that just for a specific?
No, if it's a camper, it really should.
License campground or you know, it's kind of a murky thing, right?
Someone's living in it over the six months, it really should be registered.
Okay.
Uh, if they're all that six month period, they need to be filing a registration if they're not calling it a home. Um, I that's, I think that's one of the ways to sort of deal with it.
So you're saying register the camper if it's being in a place for over six months?
Yes. Would be one of the things I would add to that. Um, Malcolm brought up some things that I wasn't really thinking about before. But when I was on the planning commission on wording and stuff like that and working with. Um, two rivers out of Queechee, we always looked at it as may, shall, and should in our zoning document. You may do it, you should do it, you shall do it, you're doing it. If you think of it from those stamped, when you're looking what you want to really enforce, what you want to have teeth, those three words really are strong. The flood thing I have a little bit of concerns with that is driven by FEMA and federal government as far as the flood hazard area. That's what you get if the town wants to get better money to replace culvers, upgrade culvers and stuff like that. You really, really, really have to do that. There's no question. I agree on the the channel or that that's something new that's come up that, you know, they really haven't been mapped, they haven't been studied. And I would ask us to be a little bit cautious about that.
And that that's a moving piece.
It is, but it's because it's coming down from the state.
And it's not even coming from the state. There are certain federal regulations that are changing as far as the definition of flood hazard regulations. So it whether it be a flood federally F F R M S, I believe is the code for it now. Federally flood regulated, something other, but it's not just flood hazard mitigation areas anymore. So it's a, it's a tough thing. And honestly, just as a public comment here from the planning commission, this intent of this is to keep us. In line with both state and federal statutes, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but keep going. Yeah.
It's a moving target for us.
Yeah, so the flood plane, you went from one foot above base elevation to two feet. That's a big deal. In the flood plan, I've all learned to do. Do you, when I own the campground, it was one foot, all my building elevations. When I had to rebuild, had to be at that one foot. Now you're saying it's two foot.
And that.
That is very daunting to take one of your biggest businesses in the town of Rantry right now.
Yeah.
So.
And that changes too, because they're remapping all the flood planes right now, right?
No, 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 the federal, the federal law is one foot. We've gone to two feet.
If if I can just chime in here, the FEMA minimum is base floor elevation, which means. You're the the base of your front door is at that flood height. So going one foot above that is one foot above what that, what we think that base flood would be. Um, now, there's no new principal residential structures, new principal commercial. Any new principal structures prohibited in the flood plain is right now. And so in this draft, we're not changing that.
No, but you run from the one tier to the two, and that's a big deal.
For substantial.
Substantial improvement. So if a house washes away and they want to rebuild, saying go two feet above because you washed away.
So you're saying only after a flood like the campground?
We won't let you, based on our existing flood regulations, to build new in a flood hazard area.
Right, it's existing in the current bylaw.
Unless you bring it up to the ten foot.
No.
No, no, no.
No, you can't build at all in that area.
In the floodway, the floodway is where the channels were.
Know the entire special flood hazard area. So both the the.
One hundred percent.
One percent chance was.
In the whole hundred foot, you're not going to let like tents, the Able Mountain campground.
Not tents, permanent structures.
They have an office, they have prevailing, they have a pool house.
It's existing, so if they get flooded out and substantial damage happens, if they're to refill, they would have to rebuild at least two feet above that base flood elevation.
That's what I.
If they rebuild.
Yeah, that's what that's what I understand.
We don't have, they don't have to do it now.
I understand that. I understand that, but that is still something that's a little more onerous about somebody that inches matter. Where the federal is one foot, I would, I would ask that we go back to the one foot. That'd be my, my comment.
Um, can I add something to that? My interpretation of the rebuild is that if you suffer more than fifty one percent damage. It's fifty one percent of some several variables. Or in fifty one percent damage, you cannot rebuild unless you have very specific things you can do. One of them is you can't hinder the flow of the water. Well, that's why it floods, there's water there. So it's very tough to rebuild if you're in a floodwater.
Yes, I understand that.
And the other thing is that that fifty one percent, say you had two, two different homes. One, you had a very wealthy home, say a five hundred thousand dollar house, and the other was a two hundred thousand dollar house. They each suffered hundred thousand dollars worth of damage or a hundred and ten thousand. Which is more fifty percent of two hundred, more than fifty percent of two hundred. He can't rebuild. But for the same hundred dollar damage to the wealthy house, he can rebuild. Yes.
That's not, that's not correct. It's not true at all.
Yes, that's not.
That's the way I live.
Imagine that somebody, somebody down to the campground and telling me that I cannot rebuild my business and rebuild my my wealth.
Yeah.
And just be shut down just because I lost, I lost everything. There's eight feet of water over. I mean, I lost every building, I lost it. I would not be here today if I was not able to rebuild and sell.
I don't know how you did it because I I did, I I think you should be able to rebuild. But my reading, my reading of the law, Paul, says you can't.
Your reading on the laws, you're reading on.
Going with the fifty one percent.
And I can take that into advisement and we'll put that into the fellow comments.
Well, let, show me how you can rebuild. I'd be interested.
I did it.
I know.
There were no rules for six months after I read.
I I'm arguing for that, Paul. But the law says you can't. Essentially what.
Malcolm, please, we're not, we're not here to debate.
Taking comment.
We need to take comments and we need to allow the public to be able to. Your loss is not your opportunity to educate somebody on the flood regulations as you see them. This is an opportunity for, please.
They're in, they're in a bond law now, the proposed bylaw.
Please, Malcolm, you need to allow others to speak, please. We heard your comments and we'll take them under revival. Thank you.
I'm going to keep my comments really short. I don't want to.
No, you're okay. Thank you. I wanted.
I want to be a community member and stuff like that, but I probably disagree with that. I'd I'd like to know where that fifty one percent is coming from. Um, the driveway standards, yes. I find that's going to make things very expensive for people. Someone puts a camp on a hill, they've got percent rigs, they've got travel weight. Now that they have to build the road by, and then it's going to be to the town's discretion of whether it was built right or not. And we don't have the staffing for that. We really need to just sort of tame that down. I can see with a major subdivision, but on a two lot subdivision or somebody creating a house in the road and it's on private land. Let them build the road to what they can afford.
Yeah.
And if they want to use four wheel drive to get up there, let them use four wheel drive to get up there. I mean, I understand the fire, you know, being able to get a fire truck and you want to do that. But these road standards are going to make it expensive for everybody. And if we're trying to get the goal of affordability in Vermont, that that's not it. Um, so I understand that in twenty twenty four, the state Vermont passed the Vermont Energy Code. And that we talked about implementing it in it, in our zone. Um, I'm in agreement about, you know, making things as tight as possible. However, that's not making housing more affordable. And to be, in the, I'm building a house right now. And the energy code, we always used to use two inch foam board and a, and a foundation on the floor and on the sidewalls. The energy code now goes to three inch on those same things and three inch on the floor. That's a difference of thirty five dollars each piece of foam board. And then you start to lean out with like spray foam and getting these certain energy standards. Is the town going to go? And spray that someone's there or is it just like word of mouth and certify when it goes into the land records and that's it?
Yeah.
I just, I think we should be aware of what the energy standards are and what we're, what we're implementing. Because if someone builds a camp and they're using it seasonally or three months, do we really concerned about whether it meets the energy code? That we don't know about and we're referring to it, it's a shall in this document. So.
That comes back to the you said.
It's a shall, there's no gray area. Someone's got to certify that that house you just built meets the energy code. And there's a lot of housing in this area that people cannot afford to live where they were if they had to make it into the energy code. So I just, uh, I like the idea, but we need to understand the impact on making housing affordable.
Oh, my, my interpretation of that is that the, the, the law says it should build, you should build that way. It doesn't say you would have to.
I think what Paul was just saying is that minute difference between shall and should. And so he's bringing that up to our attention in that section.
Those wording, the big, those simple words are rude, yes. When you say that, if you don't know what that code is, let's not push it on to our Rantry residents until we're have a clear idea.
Did you see the executive order from our governor?
I haven't, I'm sorry. I'm living in a different world now.
So, um, the executive order that was just signed yesterday, um, is telling regulatory entities. Specifically on residential building, um, efficiency standards to go back to either using twenty twenty standards or twenty twenty four standards. So that's a valid point that again, it's a moving target for us on that. And but the governor is saying that now if you're building certain types of residential buildings. That you can either be reviewed under twenty twenty or twenty twenty four. And there's a huge difference as you just pointed out.
I, my original.
I don't know how that's going to.
Built in twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
Now I have to follow twenty twenty four.
God, I hope.
No, I.
That simplicity of what you were.
I think that would be a lot more expensive for me to hit the energy code.
Yeah.
They have the means of doing it. There might be some folks that aren't able to do that and how are we going to lease those people and put that on us on them? I I really scared about that.
That's an understandable comment, thank you.
Um, in the long run, I don't see how this document makes living in Rantry more affordable. I find it more regulatory and not affordable. That's just my own. The only thing that I think that we were attempting to make it affordable was the half acre zoning. And I consider it terribly blue in the face. Say it over and over. You cannot do a well septic. In your building envelope, it's hard enough to do it on one acre if you had full flat one acre. Um, but half acre thing really is throwing something out there that I don't think someone can do without a lot of maneuvering around.
Uh, just out of curiosity, has anybody looked at any other town that implemented a half acre zoning that's not on town sewer or water? This and are they doing it? Well, Brantry has it right now in the South Brantry Village. It's I had to hear that soon.
May I explain why? There was a water system up on top of the hill that used to filter locomotives. That whole village was on the spring on the top of the mountain and there's a house and stuff like that. Over time, that dried up during severe droughts and stuff like that. And it wasn't a reliable source. People had to start drilling wells and stuff like that. They can do that on an existing lot, but if someone has an acre and they want to subdivide a half acre, they're still not going to be able to do it because it's still got a well and septic there. And if it's an in-ground system, then you've got to prove out a replacement area. But it's just no way, I've been in real estate thirty years and I.
Yeah, there are multiple communities throughout the state of Vermont that are trying to tackle that issue. From Montgomery to, uh, who knows, Waitsfield, two different ends of the spectrum right there. They're trying to grapple with onsite wastewater and septic that are in, whether they're currently existing in half acre lots. Or one acre lots, but they're trying to encourage development in a dense area. Through either shared septic and shared water or municipal system or municipal wastewater or municipal water system. And there are decentralized ways of doing that. And by designating those areas, if I'm kind of moving ahead of myself here. By kind of trying to respond to some of the questions that you've said, but this will be the next agenda item. So, um, there are ways for that to happen. If we don't allow it to happen within our zoning regulations, it's not going to happen. So we're saying that if we want this to happen with dense development, this is where we want it. And that's how we went about that approach.
And that's.
So you don't want to debate it. I just wanted to let you know as a response, that's why we are saying.
Close to that in town of Rantry, yeah, there was no pressure.
I don't need to debate it.
Yeah. Right, there's just no pressure.
I just, uh, can we, before we devolve?
No, I just, I just, are there the rest, the.
Comments?
That the half acre zoning exists now, if they, somebody had a failed septic system in Rantry on those half acre. And they had to get a new septic system, how could they possibly?
Amount system is how they would have to do it.
Okay. Well, typically, so you can only subdivide if you get your state waste form.
Correct, correct.
So if you can't do it on half, on half an acre, you're not getting that permit, you're not subdividing. So you go a little bigger, maybe three quarters of an acre and you can do it. So in that sense, it's making it more affordable by saying you can, we're we're trying to make it as as accommodating as possible. And as affordable as possible, so you're not having to buy a one acre, two acre lot, you can maybe go a little under. If you can't do it on half an acre, this should be great. A lot of, a lot of lots available out there are already at that threshold. There's not a lot of.
Correct, there's a lot of pre-existing lots that are less than an acre.
Yeah.
Throughout the town that failed septic systems have required a full mound thirty thousand and plus wastewater system to be installed. To be able to keep that house occupied.
Yeah, right.
And people have made that investment and that's an investment that each individual property owner has to take on themselves.
But with any new wastewater permit, you're you're also looking at a replacement septic location as well. So you're.
It's a friendly mound, you can take the mound away now and you can rebuild it. You don't need to re, that's the bonus of a.
Which is expensive and it's not affordable.
Yeah, it's thirty thousand dollars to get it taken away.
Yeah, so, so these are all very important things for us to consider as the planning commission. But as I preference or or referenced was the ability for us to say this could happen. Versus this shall not happen are two different approaches that we considered, right?
Can I just make one last comment?
Yeah, please.
All state septic and subdivision rules are come from the state. Wait for the state to change the idea of how a septic looks. We designed a three bedroom home septic system for four hundred and twenty gallons a day. We designed a three bedroom home septic system for four hundred and twenty gallons a day. It's huge. The average family does not use four hundred and twenty gallons a day.
Right.
If they drop that requirement and dropped it down to three hundred and fifty gallons or three hundred gallons, which is more realistic probably. If you're doing laundry every day. So let it come from the state. It's not.
My kids are dirty, Paul. Like, man, God possibly doing.
They have subdivision with no septic. It has to come from them and it's up to our legislators to say. It's costing me thirty, forty thousand dollars to build a crazy mound. How do we make this less expensive? That you don't have to truck certified mound sand from Lebanon, New Hampshire to bring you Vermont. I mean, that's where it comes from. It doesn't come from. Creating a half acre zone and saying this is our affordable.
I will encourage you to check out the executive order that.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, like, I haven't dived into it either. It literally just came out on end state and it's already getting challenged by like the natural resource review board, which is now the, the land use. The review board, the word, lovely word, um, and A and R itself are questioning that. So, um, but that does impact. How we enforce things locally and at a state level.
I can live with the half acre thing if that's what she folks wanna do, but it's not.
No, I understand.
As long as it's, it's expressed by the town of Braintree, by the zoning administrator that.
You need a state permit.
You need a state permit.
Yeah, and that's what we've tried to do.
Contact a licensed designer and that's where you start before we say.
Definitely. And I think a lot of that. Yeah, and I think a lot of that, what we tried to do. And we're kind of moving into the next section of discussion for consideration of these public comments. So before I close public comments, I would like to just give an opportunity for anybody else, so to speak.
Because extending the arguments. It, it should be noted somewhere that not all land is suitable for development. Period.
Correct. Yeah, thank you.
And that's what the state Vermont does with its regulations. I mean, we, we, we cover that.
It's not just wetlands. There's a lot of places that are not suitable. Recognize that and leave them where it's natural.
Yeah.
But that's why you have the conservation zone. To zone.
You're not listening.
But I just, yeah, okay. I understand that there are some things, I mean, I, the, the cost of developing a piece of land is the biggest barrier. How far you can power, what the septic system is.
I mean, anything can be developed, like any, if you have enough money, anything can be developed. It's not a matter of if or not. It's just a matter of if you want to.
If you're willing to go through.
And then you can literally develop anything.
Sure.
No.
I mean, yeah, but that money, that'll do anything. That's a very confusing.
I agree with you.
And your question, argument of like.
And that is the, the crux of what we tried to do here.
Yeah, all we're saying is. It is permitted if you meet the conditions. All right? And if you meet the conditions, even something that you would think, why on earth anybody wanna build there? It's a question of, like I says, it's a question of money. If they really have enough money so that they can comply with those conditions, then they can build there. All this is, is permissible. It's permitted. It's not saying you can't. It's just saying, hey, if you wanna build there, even though you, you might be loony. Okay, but if you got enough money and you wanna build there, you can do that. That's exactly what Mike is saying. And that's what the zoning permits.
Yeah. I do wanna thank everybody for the opportunity to hear your concerns and your specific points of, of either clarification or disagreement or agreement with us tonight. Through the review of the draft bylaws, um. If there are no other public comments, I just again, wanna make sure everybody has the opportunity to do that because there's no reason for us to limit comments if there's additional discussion to have. Other than that we need to get home at some point and take action at this.
Right? Point is having to wash dishes and. Uh, my, my only question is that, and I still didn't see it, is that there, it doesn't appear that there's any delineation for commercial development in Braintree still.
Yeah. That's a good one because you haven't said that specifically tonight, but we have received comments in the past, not just from you, but from other individuals throughout the town. About the clarification of that. And we did try to define that. Um, so at this.
Share like the comments that you grabbed and writing some people so we just know.
Uh, yes, we can. Uh.
But not, we are not here this evening to do that.
Okay, all right. All right. I just wondered, I, I would like to know what edit people have looked at.
Yeah, so we have not just, um. The list of comments that in parking lot issues that were raised at the public forum back in January. Uh, we have public comments on record that we've held, um, in our files that are available for viewing by the public. Um, I wish I had a better synopsis of them right off the top of the head right now, Paul, but I don't unfortunately.
No problems.
The, the minutes are, are on file if you want.
Um, one of them I can say is specifically looking at, uh, subdividing in a rural one district, whether that be a ten acre or a five acre lot. Or even a six acre lot and consideration of that. Um, consideration of reducing or expanding conservation zones due to wildlife corridors or another thing. And, and suitability for building within a flood plain versus a flood corridor or even on a, um. On terrain that is steep and prone to overland flooding versus inundation flooding, right? So, um. Those are some of the big ones that I think popped up throughout our conversation, um, as well as the proper location to encourage housing development, whether that be. In a village center area that was traditionally a village center versus where we think a village center would be more suited. Due to its proximity to the ability to tie into an existing water and wastewater system that's operated by a municipality neighboring us such as Randolph. Which, which leads a huge, um. I think argument for us to look at what we're calling South Randolph, which is this area around the town offices as a village center with half acre, um. Uh, zoning. Regulations. So the proximity of an existing water and wastewater was something that said, well, you know, not only could you do it decentralized, but you could also look at partnering with your neighboring community to extend a water and wastewater system there. So. That was one of the things that we looked at. Um. We. Are going to close public comment period. Right now of our public hearing.
Do you need a motion?
Yes. We'll do it by the book. Yes.
Okay, uh, hearing nobody else saying wanting to make a comment. Now I will move that the public hearing on the draft zoning bylaw will be closed.
Second. Sounded reluctant. All right. Uh, any other discussion?
Why not continue if we? If we're gonna change the bylaw. In this reaction to these comments. Why don't we continue it to a certain time? So we can have another meeting. On, on the revised bylaw.
Because we haven't gotten to the revised bylaw, whether or not we were voting on or out of the bylaw at this point. So we're just closing the public hearing comments for this public hearing tonight.
But you're gonna vote whether you're moving into the support tonight.
If we get an emotion on it, I will.
Okay.
Accept it. Yeah.
Stick around.
Yeah, definitely. Uh, but that's to be decided by the planning commission. Definitely.
Tell me again, Nathan, why do you want?
Excuse me, we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Chair. Where are we discussing? We have.
Is there any further discussion on the?
Close the hearing.
Close the public comments. For the public hearing tonight.
Is that just for the public hearing tonight?
Correct.
Is that what the intention of? Given to the select people? This bylaw outstanding?
Not at this point. We're just closing the comments for the public hearing that we're holding tonight.
What we're gonna do with the comments?
The comments are.
That's item number four on the agenda.
Yes.
Malcolm.
Well. I know I closed the meeting, so I know what you're gonna do with it.
We're not closing the meeting. We're just closing.
I know that.
Okay.
But. I'd like to know what's gonna happen next, other than just discussing that.
Thank you, Paul. If you guys do have another meeting, could we make extra copies in the town clerk where you can come get them? And it's that office.
Yeah, but, but Jesse was making copies.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, just.
Do you, do you wanna take this one with you?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just, I'm going off it.
Yeah, yeah. No, that, that's what, yeah, that's what I suggested.
Okay, all right. Yeah.
Makes it a lot easier.
Definitely. Thank you. Uh, any other discussion on the motion to close the public comments?
Public hearing.
Or close the public hearing, sorry. Uh, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome.
I don't want to close it.
You don't want to close the?
You already know.
All right, continue.
All right. Uh, the motion passes three to one. Welcome, uh, opposed. Next, our agenda for the Braintree Planning Commission is to review the public hearing comments. Everybody remembering. So one of the first things was trying to identify what we've received for public comments. Uh, over the course of us working on this. Um, and we had a matrix that we were working through and. Let's see if I can get this correct. What we did during our regular meetings over the past. Eight or nine months is we, we took. It, yeah, nine months, um, we took those comments and we went line by line and went through those. And as a planning commission, we tried to, um, reconcile. The changes and the recommended, recommended changes which resulted in the draft bylaw that you see today. So each one of those conditions that are questions that we can make available and put up onto the website. And, um, we have the, the list of individuals here today and we can make that available to everybody. That's fine. We can certainly do that. Um, but we did methodically go down one by one by one by one. And went through all those and based in most of those, we actually voted whether or not we thought it was viable or not viable to include. The edits in the town plan. I can specifically say the discussion on rural one versus rural scenic. Um, the definitions there, the interpretation, the, the support from the planning commission was to preserve. The rural character of those sections of town that are identified on the future land use map. Um, it was the belief of our planning commission that, um, having. Smaller five, six acre lots. Was not conducive to maintaining those, uh, rural scenic areas. Which goes to the idea of what defines what a scenic asset is, right? And I think that was a very clear question tonight that we received of how do you define that and how do you bring that up to the, well, in the board? And it's a valid point that we need to consider.
Well, let's just a, a, address that. Cause it's a question of whether or not a, a zoning ordinance bylaw. Is supposed to be so overly specific that it covers every possible contingency, uh, uh, related to that concern. Or whether or not it is to say that reasonable people on, on, on the development review. Board. Uh, have the ability and the responsibility to use their judgment. On these matters. Because it's impossible to, basically impossible to anticipate every possible circumstance. And put into the zoning ordinance, specific language around every specific, uh, possibility. So it's a question of judgment. And that is what a development review board is set up to do, to exercise judgment.
Um, do you feel? That we need to have? More specificity? In what the definition of, of a scenic character is or scenic traits? Defining what that is in our bylaw at this point.
I don't see how we can. I don't see how we can because the, the scenic character of a tree or of a view may depend very much upon. The circumstance in which the tree is located or, or the, or, or the view. Uh, I just don't see how you can possibly go there. I think that's why you have site visits, all right? And their site visits are required. So that the, the development review board and other. People can go and see what is being requested, yeah, by actually looking on, a, a, at the site. What the implications of that request might entail.
Much of that scenic. Is associated with vegetation.
And for lack of, what are you saying?
Or it's not scenic if it's lack of vegetation, in my opinion.
So you're saying if I have a beautiful view of Braintree range from a resident in a rural one district. Compared to my neighbor that could cut down trees because his trees are up, they are more scenic than the one that doesn't have trees?
Yeah. Ironically, it's more scenic here.
So then you just proved false point.
What? I mean, but let's talk about trees. Are we talking about a tree that it's a one inch diameter stem? Or are we talking about a tree that's, that's a foot and a half in diameter? Are we talking about a tree that's six months old or a tree that's three hundred years old and dying? I mean, if you can't, you can't go there, folks.
Or is it the view?
Yeah, and, and, yes, but the view changes depending upon the age and the size of the tree.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you just, you just, you just can't go into that kind of detail on the zoning orders. You have to have a degree of judgment and to say. Is the, because remember this part of the scenic is the character not only of this particular lot, but of everything that's around it. Right? Okay, and everything around it is different for every particular lot. Uh, uh, so you have, you have to use judgment. You have to use judgment here. And, and within the, within the guidance that the, uh, the town plan has said that we cherish. You know, certain things and, okay. How do you, how do you live with that? Uh, goal. That, uh, of the town plan. Okay, again, it's a question of judgment and it's balanced because sometimes you say, well, you know, if we, if we. If we are not gonna sacrifice this, we have to sacrifice something else in order to be able to, to accomplish the, the objective. And, and those trade offs again are judgments that the development review board is entitled and expected to make.
I, I wanna. Just be cognizant of time and everybody's ability to talk through some of these, but we do have a couple other. Um, questions and if it's okay with planning mission, I'd like to, well, folks to speak.
No, and the, this is just us.
Okay.
This is, this is, this is, the, the hearing and the comments are closed.
Okay.
This is just us.
Even if we had a suggestion.
You could write, you could send it, it, by, by mail or email to us, but the public part of.
But if we have a fair idea of what other towns have done, you don't care to hear it right now?
Not, not right now.
Okay. That's good.
Because we have to make a judgment at this point.
And you're gonna be making, all right.
That's interesting. Questions. No, look, it's still make a comment. I, I guess watch out your work. You're, we're trying to like make it, what it sounds like is we're, we're even muddying it even further, basically saying. Well, there's really no difference. We're, we're, it is in the eye of the beholder of what is seen it. And that's the whole point.
It's in the eye of the, the majority of the development review board, not of any single.
Is that Braintree? This ERB is five people.
We, we need to keep it focused. I understand that there's, um.
I just had one quick, that'll solve it. It would take me two seconds to say it.
I, I'm.
One thousand, two thousand.
Paul, please.
I haven't moved in my mouth yet.
Yeah, please.
So.
Please be simple and allow.
Yeah, I mean, this really, I'm gonna leave here. I, I am not recommending what he's reading. It's real.
I just want. I wanna recognize Paul.
What are you trying to protect? If you're trying to protect the.
No, I'm sorry. You're both paying Paul.
Yes, if you're trying to protect the Braintree mountain range, that's what the scenic resource is. If you're trying to protect that. Everything else is that, it's really just Paul. Or towards when, towards the interstate and stuff. If you're on the verge of Braintree Hill or if you're going out by falls and stuff. If it's the Braintree mountain range you're trying to protect, make that.
I think that, yeah.
Make that the view you're trying to protect.
I appreciate that. And that was the comment that we were considering was.
Thank you.
How to define what that scenic piece is and whether it's objective or subjective.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how you.
And I don't know how to do that. I don't know how to address that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my point being is that though, again, it's so. It, it, it's to me, I, when I look at other towns bylaws, we are the only one that has this. Dilemma that we're creating with ourselves here because we want to protect everything. And I understand that, but. We're refusing to have any. Real change in that because we wanna just call them the same thing when. real change in that because we wanna just call them the same thing when they're not. I mean, you drive around Braintree, how many houses are falling around everywhere? Like, who cares about a tree, let's look at our houses, let's look at everything else around us. It's not just scenic is everything.
So we're limited to just what the town can control, right? And so.
Understand, I mean, but my point is like, we're talking about it in terms of like.
So the town, the town plan identifies what we feel as valuable as being scenic. What the actions are to protect those areas, including the conservation areas or those scenic areas. So the, the challenge that the planning commission had was trying to match the actions to preserve some of those areas that we were identified in the town plan as scenic. And that doesn't just extend to the Braintree range as Paul Ray was just mentioning. There are other areas in town that are scenic too. So uh, we appreciate, this is a reiteration of what we've heard earlier and this is why we're trying to deliberate on and um, review those public hearing comments as the planning commission. So appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness. Um, one of the things that was also brought up was how did we affordability get considered into zoning updates? And I think we've addressed this multiple times as a planning commission on where are the best areas to support dense, more um more feasible areas to develop. People had mentioned, how is it possible to develop in certain areas versus soils and et cetera? Um, those are based on, again, the state statutes and threading the needle for our planning uh, commission to identify what was statutorily required for us. And so we tried to look at that in ways to make things more affordable, we're looking at being able to not just look at the cost of development as far as the, the specific upfront costs, but also the cost of being able to extend electricity utilities out through a rural area to a, a far off place. So looking at the design and the requirements for a private driveway versus a um, private road or access to a planned subdivision that's going to have multiple units versus a house that's going to be up in a rural scenic area on its own or a camp on its own. So we tried to look at those scenarios um, and how they would be uh, applied in various zoning uh zoning districts. Uh, the formatting issues, Lou, we talked about those and we appreciate the, the comments on being able to um, look into that.
Lou, you will give us the eight editorial ones?
Yeah. We just talked about deleting rural scenic and scenic character listed. That was um, something that was brought up by Lou as well. Um, and.
Well, let's talk about that. Which one was that?
We were just talking about the characteristics, that's where we got into.
Which, which, which section?
Page fifty-five, it was right before we got into the section, so, um.
Yeah, let me just, let me just make sure with.
And we just kinda talked about that, so if you all have some consideration that you would like to think about on uh, deleting rural scenic.
Well, uh, it, he wasn't suggesting, as I, I believe he was not suggesting uh, deleting all of A, but just the uh, within the rural scenic district, deleting that. Development, scenic resources development shall be located and configured to avoid undue adverse impacts. Forget the side, C sidebar, to the scenic character of the area. I'm, just, just, I'll just put that on the floor, I, I, I would uh, move that we uh, accept uh, that edit to uh, section six point five E subsection A.
Ethan.
Oh, second, oh.
Can, uh, we're going to defer to our consultant to give me a little bit of guidance here on this.
I, I would highly recommend having a parameter within which the DRB can work. Um, and I think that's why putting in the rural scenic district, if you can, that parameter is a math thing that the DRB can look at and evaluate what is scenic. Because Paul, as you mentioned, it can be anything and everything and that makes it somewhat arbitrary, which you isn't a place you want to be.
This limits it to that zoning district.
It does, and you can define it differently, but I, I would recommend that you define it.
So.
So you're saying that we should have scenic consideration only in the scenic district and not in any other district, when we have a conditional use of it?
I'm saying that if you have scenic consideration, you define what that consideration is.
I find with that, even though the state doesn't do that when it does interact with it, right? I mean, the state has seen it considerations that it uses all the time, boards consider it, they use their judgment, et cetera. But this language says that we in Braintree, when considering a conditional use, will consider scenic resources only within the rural scenic district. Isn't that your intention?
Where, where does it say that?
What I'm saying is.
Six point five.
Five, section E subsection A.
I didn't catch it.
What I'm saying is you don't have to use the rural scenic district, you can use another parameter. I just.
So you're, it's not using the, are you looking at the language, just read that grammatically?
Yeah, it's just saying as scenic resources, it's saying that the development within the rural scenic district shall be located and figured under like, under the same tax of the scenic character of the area. So you will want to expect, I think you'll want to uh revise the language here. It doesn't have to be the rural scenic district.
Right, we, we, we wanna consider scenic consideration.
You're expanding it outside of that.
All the rest, none of the rest, none of the rest of the criteria. Mention any district, because it's a conditional use, we apply the same criteria, whether it's conservation, rural scenic, rural one, village district, anything. This is the only one that references rural scenic.
So if I had this written down correctly, when you provide the comment, if we deleted the word rural scenic district?
Yeah.
The name doesn't fit it.
Yeah.
Please hold on, and apply it to all conditional use permits required.
You don't have to, from as far as I'm concerned, just get rid of the words rural scenic district and also C sidebar, since there's no sidebar anywhere.
I can say, I think you can follow any district you want, but what by some title? But whether it's not in other districts or only limited to scenic.
So if we were to read this as scenic resources?
When you read it?
Section six point five.
I don't think, I don't think that term should only apply to rural scenic.
No, that's what he just said. So, development shall be located and configured to avoid undue adverse impacts to the scenic character of the area. The development or area of the area, don't change anything, so again, it would be development shall be located and configured to avoid undue adverse impacts, impacts to the scenic character of the area.
That was my motion.
That was your motion. So we have a motion on the table to change that section again, it's six point five, section E subsection A. Removing development within the rural scenic district. And replacing with development shall be located and configured to avoid undue adverse impacts to the scenic character of the area.
Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Oh, it has been second, okay.
Where is the sidebar?
Is there any further discussion? There is no sidebar, we're taking that out. Yes, we're taking that out too, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, I don't think, I think that is the criteria, the emphasis in, is on scenic quality in that area. But it shouldn't be limited to that area.
That's what.
The motions are for you.
But then you shouldn't change it necessarily. The name of that district, is that's where the emphasis is, but it should be applied to other areas.
That's what, that's what, that's what the motion does.
Yes, yeah, this is, these are general.
I should not.
It, it applies, it now applies to all districts under my motion.
Yeah, it.
Read it again.
Uh, I will read it, development shall be located and configured to avoid undue adverse impacts to the scenic character of the area.
Yeah, I can go with that, I didn't understand it.
I will call a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome?
Yeah, I'm for it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We, we took that one thing down on that, right, Paul? Yeah.
With the chair vote?
It didn't happen. But yes, I'm in favor of us.
Lou, what was your second?
I had to break a vote out.
I guess I would add some.
Lou, Lou, what was your second one?
The second was don't allow the.
No, wait, give, give us the.
Seven, seven point three, don't allow the development review board to waive the specific uh subdivision waivers.
Lou, I would ask if you could defer the discussion of that one to, to the discussion of my which is in the same vein, because I have specific language, okay?
Uh, eight point two was the other thing that we had tonight. Um, I also just wanna reiterate that we have gone through the public forum comments and addressed those in the current draft. So we're not going to follow up on those directly tonight. We have the tracked version, what we can make available and we can give you all the, the list of issues that we've addressed. But under eight point two, the development review board, don't allow a waiver of dimensional requirements.
In no place, is it fine, mention dimensional requirement?
Excuse me?
Is dimensional requirement, and the definitions refined any place?
It's under section eight point two, so let me go there, so.
That would be page eighty-two.
So, under eight point two.
It would be, it would be in the, in the.
It's not in the definition, it's not.
That's where it should be.
No, it.
No.
This is talking about allowing a waiver of those dimensional requirements.
It's a dimensional requirement.
It's identified in each zoning district.
There is a chart in here under each, uh, under the.
It's, it's different in different places. Is that to setback or dimensional requirement?
Setback is a dimensional requirement.
Is the area of a building dimensional requirement?
You mean internal?
What?
Number of square feet of the building?
Foot front.
As a percentage? As a percentage of the lot.
That's a dimension?
Yeah, defer to Kyle on that.
Yeah, but that, I mean, it's not something to really waive, that you're waiving a requirement, but, and otherwise a requirement that you otherwise have to comply with it. So you're not really waiving.
I, I'd like to see a hard definition of dimension in the bylaw. If you would. And then we can agree on where it applies.
Chair.
Lou, you're being very patient, thank you.
Well, my concern on this dimension requirement is that it allows the DRB to waive lot size.
That's right, that's right.
And so if we're gonna put a definition in, which I think is possible, Malcolm, and a good idea, it might get tricky because in some cases you want it to include and in others not. So, but my concern relative to this is that it allows the DRB to waive lot size.
I know.
Did I put an example up there? If I had a fifteen acre lot and I wanted to subdivide it into two acres and that was in a rural.
No, no, because the first sentence here says, there are times when for specific reasons, a proposed use cannot fit. It, it cannot fit.
A permitted or conditional.
So, like, you've got a fifteen acre lot.
Because of wetlands? Let's just use that. To the state wetlands, you can't develop, where you need to put in a septic system.
Then why, why wouldn't you?
What's your problem with us allowing it for specific reasons? I see the problem being that what the hell are those specific reasons?
Yeah, but, yeah, what are this, that, that makes sense.
So, uh, by not allowing them to waive those.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's where I'm having the problem with, with Lou's suggestion, because I'm not it seems to me that this is written so that uh, you have to demonstrate that your lot cannot be used for the purpose that is a permitted use. And this is, this is, this is under subdivision, this is not under conditional use, this is under, okay? Um, and if under a subdivision, uh why would you subdivide? I, 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 I guess I just don't see. I'm just ha, I'm ha, I'm having trouble and, and part of my trouble, Lou, is that I have approached the solution to this problem from a different direction. And, and that, and that's, that's why, that's why I, I, I've asked that we defer the discussion of this until we get to.
Well, it's not related to subdivision, this is just general waiver language.
No, no, that's the problem, that's my problem. See, I'm approaching this as, this is eighth, that, that, that the um, um.
Eight point two is waivers and variances.
Waivers and variances, and I was approaching it from, from the subdivision side. Thank you.
The variance is stemmed from a US Supreme Court decision as to what really is a variance, and there are four conditions which are not very clear here. It's a waiver that, of a dimension, and that's not clear here, um. So, the variance and waivers differ. And it has to be a natural condition to be a waiver, the buyer of that lot has to ru, it has to be evident. Other words, if, if there's solid rock under the lot, he couldn't, didn't know when he bought the lot, then he could get a waiver.
Are you talking about waivers or variance?
I'm variance, sorry.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, we're talking about waivers, not variances.
It's waivers.
Eight, eight point two is something.
Waivers, yeah, yeah, right.
I just wanna point out, if you continue to read this, you need to read the whole paragraph together, you can't separate the sentences, right? So.
Push perfect, or eight two one or eight?
Eight point two. There are times then for specific reasons, a proposed use cannot fit the requirements of a permitted or conditional use. This regulation allows for such unusual development, but only within certain bounds through the process that follows. Development that is already a non-conforming use due to valid land uses that predate this bylaw may be changed with approval from the development review board only as outlined.
Let's change.
Please let me finish.
Sure.
Only as outlined below, applicants for new development that only needs a dimensional change from the established standards such as a reduction and setback may be able to get a waiver. These are issued by the administrative officer, not the development review board.
The development.
No, it says by the develop, by the administrative officer for certain conditions and the development review board for others. What are those others, right? So there's some ambiguity there.
Well, no, elsewhere, elsewhere in the order.
Applicants for development that cannot get a waiver and that cannot be permitted in strict conformance with the bylaw may be able to get a variance from the development review board after meeting a rigorous five-part test. I would suggest that there is enough disagreement and questions amongst our specific planning commission that we need to table this discussion on this section and bring this under advisement at our next board meeting. I'm open to a motion to accept a specific change at this point for us to consider. If there is not a motion, I would recommend that we try to uh, develop some clear language on section eight point two that we're in agreement before we pass this on to the slide board.
Lou, are you gonna offer specific?
No, I'm asking for the planning commission, if the, there's public comments that want to be considered by the planning commission, they can be submitted by writing or at our next meeting.
Thank you.
So, we've also I'd like to move on because I don't think I have a motion on the floor for any changes to that section. All right. Yes, we talked about rural one versus rural scenic and what those were and how extending village area through the neighborhood residential area that we propose in the future land use. Residential area that we propose in the future land use map. The reason why we cannot do a village extension into where we've set. The neighborhood residential area as a proposed zoning district, which is a new zoning district in our bylaws. Is it doesn't meet the definition of what a village center designation would be. The state statutes that can find a definition of currently a village center versus a designated downtown. Or a designated neighborhood area. Restrict us from being able to extend it and encouraging what would be considered, um, strip development and sprawl development for along twelve A. The very differences between a village center and a neighborhood residential area. Are specifically, the neighborhood residential area is only for housing. And home occupation businesses, home enterprises. A village center allows for commercial development and mixed-use development within that village center. The very definition of a village center is it has commercial, residential, uh, civic and governmental. Um, even religious opportunities in those, uh, in those areas. By restricting it to this southern section specifically and not further up twelve A. It allows residential units to go further up twelve A, but it prevents commercial expansion outside of the village. That these identified.
Does it specifically say that in the bylaws, like, is that, I don't think the word commercial is anywhere in there.
I believe if you look at the definition of the allowed permitted uses for the neighborhood residential area. It does say that, um, only. Residential, primary residential units or rental units or, or that type of thing are allowed there. So I do.
Takes out the commercial.
No, I'm not sure if it takes out.
No, it specifically states that this is the allowable use there.
Yes.
Conditional uses that kind of goes into the waiver.
Yeah, so this is a general question about the, the, uh, the village area, that, right? Because you said that that is where it's defined as commercial uses allowed. I don't think that's actually in the bylaws, I don't think that says that you can develop commercial things. Under that, without conditional use, I don't think that's specifically there.
I would definitely need to go and read that section again.
It's, it's probably still, I don't.
It is, four, four point, eight point two conditional uses within the village district, conditional use is a commercial use.
Yeah. Commercial, or commercial considered conditional throughout anywhere in granted, we are not finding. Any place in granted that allows commercial use without a conditional desert. And that's pretty common with, with a lot of towns that are, that's similar size. Pretty standard practice, it's, it's, it'll be harder development and it's something that.
Skip over.
But, during this, we're probably would not be trying to people just to share.
Yeah, so I got it. It's not, yeah, commercial is not a conditional use.
So you can, it's not permitted?
It's not, it's not, yeah.
It's not.
That's what I'm saying, it's taken out, it, it was.
Yeah, that was in my question about that, I was doing a question, where, yeah, commercial development was allowed.
It is allowed within a village district as a conditional use.
Okay, it's allowed in a rural district.
Yes, it's very great, basically.
There's definitions that we tried to clean up as well, as like the difference between enterprise, home enterprise versus, um, a commercial. Enterprise would be in how that's defined by, and how the development review board would. Um.
Is that in the definition section, or is that like when you're looking at?
Think that's.
Home enterprise.
There, I believe there's.
The, the big distinction, the big distinction is that a commercial use has to be on, uh, uh, highway.
Okay.
Not, okay, not on a town. Road, but on, on a paved highway.
That's just.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure that's. I'm pretty sure that's.
I, I don't remember seeing anything like that.
Why is it that we are picking certain? Areas in the bylaw?
To discuss right now is, we're looking at the comments that we received.
And you're going only look at those comments?
These are the, the comments that we received tonight, and as part of our agenda, it was to review those comments.
Why didn't you get a chance to put all my comments in?
Uh, Mike, do you see a definition of?
What happens?
My comments. You submitted your comments, right, you submitted your comments by email. Also, your comments are part of our record and.
I didn't submit all of the comments by email. There's a lot more out there.
And you didn't ask to be recognized for additional comments.
You shut me off.
Welcome.
What?
I'm going to suggest that. If there are additional comments that you may want to make, we've already closed that period of the public hearing.
But you said, you, we would get comments after that public hearing somehow.
Do you have them in writing?
I, I, I have my back in my.
No, 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 you would have to make them in writing so that either the planning commission or the select board could consider them. You can't say, you can't simply say they're in my notes to my own.
Why not, that's in writing.
You haven't submitted it to us.
I didn't have a chance.
You haven't submitted it to us, you could submit it to, to, to us, but it has to be in writing.
That's.
Then we're getting to the point of the meeting where we're not being productive.
Thank you.
And that additional comments will be accepted. Throughout our next plant, regular planning commission meeting. Comments are able to be considered by the planning commission and the select board.
So I think I can. What does handwriting mean to you?
I would like them in an email form so we can provide them. And you have a copy of them to see that we've been in receipt of them, but if this is how you need to get them to us. This is, that's how.
I can put an email if that's.
It has to be a part.
I'm willing to take them any form you can, because I don't want to reduce the opportunity for somebody to provide comments.
But they have to be in a form that can, can be part of a public record, which means something that can be duplicatable.
We could, we could scan, we could.
So if he wants, if he wants to scan that and send it to us, that's fine.
Or I put in, I'll put in an email to you and, and reference the paragraph or the page, right?
I don't think we're gonna be able to get through all these comments tonight.
I thought we were gonna do all the comments.
We're reviewing the comments that we received, that was on the agenda, so. I will defer to the rest of the planning commission on how they would like to proceed.
I mean, my feeling is, we're not gonna get through all these comments, and so, or maybe Kyle can tell us what our options are, we can. We can plan out with all these comments attached and hand it over to the support board in a big pile, or?
I, I would, I would make the comments, so, or I would make changes based on the comments.
Are these substantial changes that would require us to hold another public hearing before we send it to the select board? Or can we make those changes? Um, based on the comments that we've received and will receive between now and our next planning commission meeting?
Yeah, there's, there's no rush to make any of these changes.
Uh, well, I don't like being rushed.
So you can make them at the next meeting, uh, I mean, I've seen. Uh, towns had a planning commission hearing and then make changes over the next couple of months, or?
But you do have to, in terms of the clock for the select board, including its action by the end of this year. We have a limited, more limited period of time.
So the, the only constraint is that there is a, uh, ten percent, uh, for, for the grants. There is a ten percent match, and as forgiven if. If the bylaw is subsequent, the draft bylaw is adopted.
By the end of the grant.
By the end of the grant. So there's that ten percent match that the town can recoup.
Right.
Um, in terms of statutory requirement. After the final planning commission public hearing, if this is it. Then the select board has a year to adopt, so they had until next October.
If we do not vote the draft bylaw forward, or the approval by the, the select board tonight. That timeline does not start, is that correct?
The, the one-year timeline.
The one-year timeline does start.
It's not the date of our first public hearing?
The date of the final planning commission public hearing.
Okay, so if we choose the. So we fold the public here. We're considering comments now.
You can take four, five months, transmit it to the select board, at which point they have six-ish months to adopt. Because we held the hearing in October.
Okay, but if we say in October that we need more opportunity to hear the public. Provide comments and we want to have a second public hearing. Does that timeline then change?
Yeah, yeah, it's the final public hearing, so if we held another public hearing, that would be that.
Okay.
That would be where the clock starts.
I don't wanna. Shoestring our select board into, like, you have to approve this within a year. And if it doesn't get approved by the select board within that year, does it automatically? Respect you, go back to us?
Yeah.
And then we have to start that process over again?
Um, at that point, you have a draft, um, and hopefully it doesn't take a year to adopt. Um, I've only ever seen that happen once, um. And so you can, but you would have to hold another public hearing.
Yep.
And it could largely be on the same draft, probably, but you submit.
Okay, I'm gonna do two brief comments.
Yeah.
Um, the, the brief comments are, uh, number one, I, I don't think the select board will have any trouble. Acting on whatever you give them within a year. Um, uh, the second observation is that it felt like there might be a little. Heat, there might have been a little heat in the room today, and so the possibility of. You having a second public hearing could maybe, you know.
I'll just add this to my own personal comments on the heat that we've, you're referencing. They're the same comments we've received from the public forum until now.
I think it was about.
And they're from the same, or, and they're from the same individuals. And unfortunately, not being heard is a perspective from the individual, and maybe not the planning commission.
Understood.
Um, so.
I think it's, they feel it not accepted.
Yeah, I don't feel that, but I, I understand your point, you know, my question is, when does the ten percent kick in?
The ten percent kicks in if we don't have the select board adopt the town zoning bylaws by December thirty-first.
Why, why is that designed?
Because that's needed to be ran through.
For the grant, but we've gone.
We could ask for an extension of that.
No, you can't.
No?
No.
No, they can always go to your grant door and ask for.
They're not gonna give it to.
Okay, I don't know that. You know that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're gonna need to tell us.
Okay, great, I don't know.
The great term, it's specifically laid out, uh, we have the grant agreement, and I would recommend reading it as the select board member. Um, it's there, and it's spelled out.
Why don't you think you couldn't call them and ask them? Like, have you had experience with that grant tour?
Yes.
Okay, then you, you have more experience than I do.
Well, maybe you could address that.
I mean, I, I did double check, and it's, it's on the website, there are no time extensions for the grant, if the grant's been sunsetted.
Okay, great, alright, got it, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
I respect. How's, what you've done and the necessity to have him. But we can amend what is there. Without necessarily having his okay on it.
Yeah, he's just there for guidance to help us make.
But we don't want the town to pay that extra ten percent.
What?
Well, that, that's my point, that, that's my point, if, if he's speaking as a select board member.
I'm just speaking as a guy.
Oh, yeah, okay, then we don't want to pay that extra ten percent, and if that's gonna be the, the guidance from the select board. Then the guidance to us is, folks, we gotta get cracking here, okay?
Because they have to want it publicly and hold their hearing.
Exactly.
So it won't do that.
Well, in, in that case, um, my recommendation is, I've taken notes down.
Rather than having a conversation with the person. Thank you.
Um, I've, I've taken notes down so I can get to work to a certain extent, especially with the just grammatical stuff. I mean, obviously, when you accept all and attract changes, there's going to be some weird things that are just there, like number issues and whatnot. Um, so all that cleaning can, can just start to happen right away. Um, if there are specific questions that you have between now and the next planning commission meeting that I can help to answer. Um, you know, you can send me a list of those, and I can just go through one by one and get my. Feedback based on if it's a statutory thing, or, uh, or language that you might want to, uh, to incorporate. Um, and that way you can be kind of up and running at the next meeting. Um, because if. It's gonna be an incredibly tight timeline either way, even if you transmit it to the select board in October.
So what you're saying is that my comments, when I, yeah, I've been trying. To go to both, all the. Finally commissioned into you. And how do we decide when, who, if you're right or not?
In, in October, October meeting.
Should we consider a special meeting?
It has to be warned, what, forty-eight hours in advance?
Twenty-four, right, or is it twenty-four?
Special meeting.
Special meeting.
Either way, you could in two weeks pull the special meeting. Right?
Why don't? I, I, I just think that this is gonna be such a bear, because we, you know.
And they're not gonna make everybody know.
Yeah, we're not gonna make everybody, but we have to be able to set it up and say, and vote on up or down. Uh, if you just go down the list and vote on up or down. But I think even so, we're gonna have to add, need to have adequate discussion around each one before we vote. And so I, I would suggest that we seriously consider having a special meeting of the planning commission. To, to focus just the only agenda item being to review, uh, and to act on the, uh, on these comments.
We got one comment out of the way.
Gotcha.
We did.
I, I, I agree with Paul.
I, I'll take small wins, right?
I have a question for Kyle.
Yeah.
But in a single unit. It's not family unit, it's a single dwelling unit. If I remember the K court case, Supreme Court case, there's no limit on the number or relation between the members. Is that, is that the result of that case?
See why there shouldn't be, that would get murky very quickly.
Yeah, what?
It, I, I wouldn't really know where you'd go with that, if we were losing the number.
You, you don't follow that part of the law, everything.
No, in, in, typically in definitions for. Uh, dwelling unit. It, it's, you, you know, a, or, or household, it's a, uh. Um. You know, a certain number of people that live together as a single housekeeping unit.
Well, I, I would buy your argument, but there's a court case, I, I believe, you, you don't know.
Right. Um, I did want to get to Nathan there, my H D for questioning.
Just sorry.
Again, interrupt real quick. Next, left word meeting is next week, uh, so now, we just had our. Second, back in.
Yeah, so if we had it in two weeks, we could be in front of your.
Two weeks of October second.
Is that? Well, this, this might be useful for me, I'd have to go back and check, but we did, uh, by law organization consortium several years ago. And if I recall, when the, the towns adopt, was able to adopt in January. Because the, it was wild documentation. Well, it was warned that the final documentation isn't due until the end of the change.
You have a thirty day. So they're recording a little bit more.
Off the record? I think we're gonna be okay. Alright?
We're still recording.
You guys are doing something in two weeks. You move it forward, we, we get it at the latest.
I don't have to, I want to reiterate that.
This November, this can be changed. I'm just saying, in the latest, we get it in November, we born it, we act on it in December, we're in.
By the end of December, yeah.
It needs to be warned fifteen days in advance of, so we have to have like new law. You know, later than the second. By the fourteenth of December, if we can't want it by the fourteenth, or the select board can't warn it by the fourteenth, and hold.
Yeah, but you're, you're not gonna hold a public hearing on the twenty-ninth of December, just, you know, it, it, come on, guys.
Why be talking that, when you're having a meeting on just, on September twenty-ninth or whatever it's gonna be in November.
October, uh, my, my, I, I, I recommend, I'll make a motion that we have a special meeting on the night of Thursday, October second.
Second, there you go.
Okay?
Seven?
October second.
Second.
Two weeks from now. Yes, and it's been seconded.
Uh, in terms of discussion, I will compile my list. Into the spreadsheet, and then, once it's, once we feel good about it, we'll send it. Into the spreadsheet and then once it's, once we feel good about it, we'll send it to you for comments.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll work to get Malcolm's.
Yeah.
Comments in as well, and we'll have that document to work from at the meeting.
That'd be great. Yeah, and it's. Maybe next week.
Yeah. I'll get it this weekend. I'll, I'll, I'll work on it this week.
Well, the more.
October.
Specific the comments are in terms of a recommend of what the language should be. The, the narrower the conversation becomes.
Okay, so October second, special meeting for, um, battery planning commission. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Uh, a list will be developed and compiled from our comments that we have tonight, as well to be added to the comments that we've received in writing. By email or by, uh, script or by letter. However, it is, we will track it best that we can to make sure we're doing it. Do you think?
Yeah, it's not so.
Didn't, you need. Well, thank you, Louis, too, at this point. You just tell me what they mean, though, okay? Are we going with like the Morse code?
That, that.
My, my, maybe. Okay, so, uh, on, uh, any further discussions? None. Um, thank you. Uh, follow favor.
I.
October second, we will have a special meeting. Any opposed?
Okay, I vote no.
I vote I as well. Uh, the motion passes. We will have an October second meeting to continue the discussion of the comments in the draft bylaws. And I really appreciate everybody sticking with me tonight and.
I'm barely sticking and.
I'm working on.
United.
I'm, I was trying, Lou. I'm, I'm trying my best.
This is a bear. I mean.
Yeah, in Yorkshire.
Did I, did I do okay? Did I do all, from your perspective, though?
Oh.
The best I could?
Yes.
Thank you. It's all I ask for. Um.
We need to close our meeting.
We also do need to close the meeting. Um. We've had a few other things on our agenda, though, Jackson.
Yeah, we have, which we tabled.
We tabled.
We haven't finished the.
We're not going to do any additional business.
Okay.
So I vote that we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by a fall.
Second.
You want it for Jackson? Oh, favor. Hi, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Linda, you're wonderful. Not only to stay through the whole thing, but to bring, now what happened to your little container of, yeah.
Those were really good. Thank you so.
I'm going to take one more. Off, out the door.
Uh, I'm not going to say no. Thank you so much. I was so sad that I didn't.
I finally, for, for to get home. I'll take one more.
Thank you. Oh, thanks.
My big cookies for the.